Good evening. It's seven o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson? Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
He's here.
It's to be adjusted by video or...
Okay, by teleconference. Mayor Pressing?
Here. Okay, the first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, October 5th, 2015. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move approval.
Motion by Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ammons, any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Don't see any. Okay, we're on to petitions and communications. I have a card from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood, who do not wish to speak at this time, however, they continue to be concerned about the Dr. Ellis sewer problems. Spencer Hadery.
Hello, everyone. I have a few updates from the student senate. So the first is that we are sending a delegation down to Springfield tomorrow, consisting of about 200 delegates from around the state. And we're going to meet with our student senators and representatives and really advocate for them to adopt a budget. So we're feeling really optimistic for that. The second is that we are in the process of making forms where we have local candidates and politicians, as well as state politicians, come and engage and interact with our student population. And we'd really appreciate if we could get a lot of engagement from the Urbana City Council with that. So we'd love to have you all participate. So if you're interested, then please talk to me after the meeting, or if not, then we will be reaching out to you via email in the near future. And the third is, I actually had a few students approach me who were really concerned with the lighting around campus. And we actually talked about this issue in the Committee on Community and Governmental Affairs, especially by the Lincoln Avenue residence halls. And from anecdotal experience, I can tell you that I get really nervous driving down there at night because it's so hard to see pedestrians crossing the street. And in fact, one of my really good friends, her sorority sister, was actually hit by a car a little while back because they could not see very well. So that's something that we'd really like to work with you all on. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Years ago, there used to be an effort to have people wear light colors at night. It really is hard to see pedestrians. So is there any effort like that to educate people? Because it's going to start getting dark really early once we go back to standard time. I always wear a very light coat for that very reason. You know, like a gray, light gray. So that would be something that would help.
Yeah, I know that there was a subcommittee on lighting that was at the university that we feel didn't really have a lot of membership, so we think it kind of died out. That was something that we discussed during our committee and we are trying to see if we can get that going again and get a lot of students involved in that. And that's something that we'd be more than happy to bring up there. But if you all have any ideas on how we can improve, that would be more than happy to work with you because it's not just limited to Urbana. It's in Champaign and around campus as well.
Okay, Aaron has a question for you.
So I was actually going to direct this towards Bill to see if there were any sort of collaborations or whatever between the university and the city of Urbana for lighting? Like, we would do the work if they paid for it or something like that?
There have been collaborations in the past and there's actually a university district lighting master plan, if you will, and there's been a variety of upgrades done. I'm a little puzzled with Lincoln Avenue. The Lincoln Avenue system is relatively new and meets current IESNA standards. But there are other areas that we need to upgrade on campus. And we have series lighting, but I think the lighting levels are pretty good. It's just that the system itself needs to be updated and replaced.
Are we talking about the one in the Lincoln Avenue area that needs to be upgraded?
No, that's a relatively new system, actually. So, but the areas that are series lighting are Lake Nevada, Oregon, Weston-Lincoln, Matthews. Those streets are series lighting that we need to replace. I think the lighting levels are pretty good, but the system itself is extremely outdated. I'm not aware of any collaborative processes, per se, of the university and the city sharing in lighting. When we redid the street lighting on Goodwin Avenue between Gregory at the South End and in that location, Goodwin is a university-owned street. North of Nevada is a city-owned street. When we replaced all that lighting and through there, we proportionately paid for our respective lighting, made it one system. So it was continuous and looked the same in the same light levels. But as far as the university sharing for lights on city streets, that hasn't happened in the past.
And so Spencer, are you talking about Lincoln and Illinois? I'm trying to envision exactly where you're talking about. There's a concern. Is it, is it on, actually on Illinois Street where this is an issue?
Right. Just right across from the Lincoln Avenue residence halls. So it's a little bit further south in Illinois, I believe. So closer to...
Iowa.
Yeah, Iowa. So, that area. But I'm just relaying a lot of student concerns and concerns that I've heard in general about lighting, not only on Lincoln, but across, like around campus and on campus as well.
One thing, we do provide, we have a giveaway of lights for bicycles. And that's really scary when you see somebody with no light on the bicycle and wearing dark clothing. It's very hard for a driver. So I think there needs to be a combination of what students do to make themselves more visible. And, you know, our streetlights, at least at Lincoln, supposedly meet all the standards for proper lighting for that type of street. Bill?
I was just wondering if those were some of the ones that were replaced with LED lighting?
They were not. Those are metal halide light fixture lights.
And do those lose power after time? I guess LED, I thought, did, but I'm not sure about the others. Is it something you have to check on a regular basis?
They have a certain life to them and I don't recall if it's in the two to three years that we have to replace the lamp and the fixture. The lamp needs to be replaced on a more often cycle than a LED light fixture. But as far as light levels and uniformity and illumination levels, you know, those meet standards, at least when they were installed. Now, there may be a lamp or two near the end of its life. And admittedly, you know, you want to replace them when they're 80% or so their light levels. But that could be. So, I mean, that could be what to tell.
Okay, thanks.
Well, we appreciate you keeping us informed. Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? There's nobody else in the audience, so I guess we're not going to have anybody else talk. Okay, I would like to talk about a veto of a resolution that was passed on October 5th. That was about providing fire services to the University of Illinois. We have a contract with them and the original contract had a method of increasing their payment for non-personnel costs every year. And it was some standard to be issued by the legislature, but the legislature stopped issuing it. So the discussion was to use a standard that is statewide average for Illinois fire departments. And when I asked Mike Munson to do a chart comparing that with our actual increases for MetCAD, that's at the bottom of my letter to you, there's a pretty startling difference. So I would rather see us have it be based on our actual costs. And we talked with the university and they're willing to find a better measure. So I think we should just hold off on revising the contract until we get more realistic cost factors. So, anybody have any questions for me? Okay?
I'm sure I do. I'm just trying to formulate it at this particular point. I don't know...
Well, you have some time to respond to this, so if you don't have a answer right now. I mean, you can vote on it, but I'm presenting it to you. And Phyllis, do you know when they're supposed to respond? Okay, Jim?
The statute doesn't provide a response date. It's to be voted on at the next regular council meeting, two weeks from today.
Okay.
Unless Veterans Day comes in.
Okay, so if you have any questions, you can ask me and I'll try to answer them. Okay, anybody else have anything they want to talk about? Okay, we go to unfinished business, which I don't think we're going to deal with any of that tonight. So the next is reports of standing committees. That's Bill Brown.
Yeah, we met last week on the 12th and we forwarded two resolutions in our ordinance to council, all with recommendation for approval. The first one is Resolution Number 2015-10-058R, Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Promotional and Marketing Agreement with Visit Champaign County, FY 2015-2016. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Brown, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Second is Resolution Number 2015-10-059R, Resolution Adopting the Learman Neighborhood Community Assessment. For the committee, I move approval.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion?
Yes, I don't know, I'm not trying to hold this up, but I'm trying to understand exactly what it is, what a neighborhood assessment is. What is that?
It was a study done by C.D. Dennis?
Yeah. So over the previous year, let's see, if I can pull the exact year out. 2014, a series of surveys were done in the Learman Neighborhood in cooperation with a university class and an intern that we had here, Aaron Bonds, at the city building, the city building and the city offices of community development. We had a, we had a survey that went multiple pages, a camera of many questions there were. I don't have the number offhand. And it was a comprehensive survey of three different sections, broken down into three different sections of the Learman Neighborhood area, dealing with quality of life, concerns about safety, aspirations, public amenities, streets and pavement conditions. And these were summarized and are being used not only as a statement of the interests and the concerns of the neighborhood, but also they're going to be used in support of funding that is being sought by the developers of the townhome site for getting financing for underprivileged and economically stressed families and also improvements at Aspen Court. So the Learman Neighborhood Action Committee approved the study formally at their last meeting, but actually have been using it as a database for future planning since it was adopted back in May 2014.
So what, I don't want to get into a whole bunch of questions. It sounds like something that has a level of interest for me. And I know Carol and I talked about this and she said she had requested one for the King Park area. So what is the process by which you go to to get something like this done? Yeah, I have it now. Libby just gave it to me. Great. So I guess we could talk about it at a later time. We don't have to get into it all now. But I'd like to know what the process is to get one for, whether it's King Park or Ellis subdivision, whatever it may be, what is the process to get something like this done? If there's a cost to the city and all those types of things. But...
Do you want to comment on that, Libby?
Yeah, I think it was a good confluence of neighborhood interest and need with a student project, student need, started with a class. There's a little background in the memo, Andrew Greenlee's survey class. Got one of his students very interested in the neighborhood, so there was a very good match there for this approach. The approach seemed to be a good approach for a very engaged neighborhood. And it was something that we were able to fund at the time through planning intern dollars. And then more recently, we underwent a similar type of process, but for different reasons, in another neighborhood in southeast Urbana, in the Silver Water neighborhood. And that also coincided with the student's interest and master's project that they complete and was a combination of planning intern support, but also the student's own support for his master's thesis. That was Maximilian Maholic. Did a lot of different things for us, but a lot of what he was doing was working with SUNA and with that neighborhood on a study that looked specifically at crime prevention through environmental design was the focus there. So we've had to create examples of neighborhood planning by talented students and hopefully we can continue to follow this model. And, you know, that might be, we can get the right match and really having an engaged neighborhood group is really helpful too. So, and I'm happy to talk with you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, that was Charlie talking.
Was he ordering food or something?
Okay, Bill, did you already make the motion or not?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, motion by Bill Brown, seconded by Dennis Roberts. Any other discussion or questions? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yeah.
That motion carries.
Then we have ordinance Number 2015-10-105, An Ordinance Revising the Fiscal Year 2015-2016 Annual Budget for MetCAD Funding. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Brown, seconded by Marlin. Would you chair? I'd like to make a comment on this.
Okay, Mayor Pressing?
Okay, I've talked with Deb Bucy of the county. The county had a 55% increase and we had a 28% increase the first year that we brought Rantool into MetCAD. And I'm very much in favor of having Rantool in MetCAD. And there was a subcommittee that worked, they changed some formulas and everything to make it be affordable for Rantool to join. And so my, I've talked to Deb Bucy and she's fine with us spreading out this payment over several years to make it more affordable for us. And so I would liken it to, when I went to Washington to talk with Senator Elizabeth Warren about people getting their mortgages straightened out so that they could stay in their homes. Sometimes, we're just, we're not talking about paying less. We're talking about just having a different time structure for paying this. And of course, the underlying problem is that the state is not allowing us to charge $1.50 per phone, which was what our voters approved back in the 1980s and early 1990s. So we're going to meet with Champaign and, you know, see if we can get something worked out. So I, I just, I'm not in favor of raising our budget at this point when we're facing such fiscal uncertainty.
And I'll raise my question to the chair.
Okay, anybody else want to comment? Bill?
Yeah.
You calling, me not calling you?
I think the main issue for me is that we did, we have an intergovernmental agreement and there's a process that that agreement has established for passing their budget and for setting the policy on how much people are charged, how much the members are charged. And we voted on that and approved it. There's 12 members on their policy board, five voting members for the budget and for how to distribute the budget among members. And of those five members, you have to have four votes in order to pass the budget. And they had four votes, exactly. And so we weren't able, our representatives weren't able to convince anyone not to pass that budget or to allocate the funding differently. I don't, I haven't heard an argument that the allocation is unfair, but it does seem like there's a question about how soon the capital spending has to occur. But if we weren't able to accomplish that through the legal process, I think we'll just have to work on a different legal way to do it instead of just say, "We're not going to pay our bill" and then risk the potential possibility that they would stop providing service, which I doubt they would do. But they could also, for members not in good standing, we would, could lose our vote on that five-person committee. You can't vote if you're not a member in good standing. And we'd still owe the money for 18 months, following according to the agreement, the same amount of money. So, you know, I think the mayor makes good arguments that maybe the capital spending could be spread out. If you look at their budgets over the past few years, it does seem to accumulate a lot of money in the first few years and then it gets spent down. So that at the end of 10 years, it's pretty much spent. But I think that argument needs to be made to the members of the policy committee. I do have a couple of criticisms, I guess, of the, minor criticisms of the policy committee. I know they're supposed to, I don't actually know that they're supposed to be open meetings. I don't know if that's a legal requirement and...
They are open meetings.
And they're, so they're open to the public, but they haven't been providing the same notice that you should get for, as a, you know, they haven't been following the Open Meetings Act if they're supposed to be doing that because there wasn't any notice for the October meeting, October 1st. There wasn't an agenda posted. Assume, I assume they met, I know they met in October. I don't know if they met in September. But if they met in October, they probably approved minutes from August and those minutes haven't been posted. Those minutes are supposed to be posted within a week.
Are they on the Champaign City website?
They aren't on the MetCAD website and I couldn't find them on the Champaign City website. Most of the others are on the MetCAD website. So I assume that's where they would be posted. They do have their calendar of meetings on the MetCAD website. And until last year, when I foiled the budgets, they hadn't been posting their budgets online, but they have started doing that. So I think that's good. They're making progress. I think they could do better. I don't know. Have you ever had a member of the press at one of your meetings?
I don't recall, but, you know, people come to the meeting.
Okay.
You know, I think the city of Champaign does try to follow the Open Meetings Act, so...
I think they could be more open and more transparent and accountable. Of the 12 members, there's two elected members, two elected members of those 12. So it'd be Sheriff Washington, Mayor Pressing, and Mayor Pressing's the only one with a vote. So I don't know if that could be different. I mean, I know it could be different. Patsy Pedrick gets to appoint someone. She could appoint an elected member. Mayor of Rantool could appoint an elected member. And, you know, potentially that could increase accountability. I guess the thing I'm thinking about is of this 12-member committee, eight of them are associated with law enforcement and fire protection, which is fine. You need that for an emergency system. But you also have these four or five people making the decisions about budget, heavily influenced about what people want. And I know if our Public Works Department had 12 people in the room and said what they wanted and were going to bill us for it, that they'd get a lot more than we probably give them because we have a lot of needs in Public Works too. We have a lot of roads that need to be fixed. So, you know, there are some questions. And if you, if we want to go back to the intergovernmental agreement and amend that, then we should propose an amendment to it if it's not working right. And that's the process that's set up to follow. I think there's a couple of things you could look at. One is, is to put a cap on member increases. I would be in favor of supporting amendment to the intergovernmental agreement. For instance, it would put a cap of 10% per year on increases and maybe not make it a, not make it a hard cap and just make it a unanimous vote. So if you need a 10% increase, you could get a unanimous vote instead of four out of five. So that would increase the, you know, it'd increase the threshold of these 16%, 28% increases that really aren't, really aren't sustainable and very hard to plan around, I think. So I'm going to support this.
Okay, I would like to point out that there's a precedent for MetCAD to give Urbana the opportunity to pay off one of these increases over five years. We did that the first time. And since then, Rantool came on and we have a, you know, a bigger increase. So there's a precedent and they did it. So I, you know, I don't know if the agreement has to be changed to do that. But as I say, I'm talking to the members and I think it's a feasible thing to do. So, okay. Does anybody else want to say anything? Dennis?
Yeah. So if it's possible to have a conversation with the city of Champaign, when do you think that might take place?
It's scheduled for next week.
Okay, so, I mean, I think I would be willing to wait until that conversation is over before taking any kind of action tonight.
Okay.
And so, you know, maybe what I would do is make a recommendation or make a motion that, that we, yeah, we're interested in, of course, being responsible. But if we can work with the, you know, the partnership and we can find out maybe in one week what the results are for that request, why don't, why don't we just wait and do this action at, you know, at the city council meeting, you know, the first city council meeting in November? So I'd like to make a motion that we just delay this, you know, for two weeks and come back.
Point of order?
Charlie?
Yeah, Dennis, according to council rules, if you were to make a motion to defer and somebody seconded that, this would automatically be put off for two weeks.
Yeah, okay, so that's good. So, all right, I'll make the motion then to defer it.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion by, it doesn't have to be voted on, right?
No, it's automatic.
Okay, all right. So there's a motion by Dennis, seconded by Charlie, to defer this for two weeks. And there's no vote necessary, so we'll bring it back in two weeks. Okay? All right, reports of special committees? We don't have any reports of officers? Libby Tyler, Community Development.
I have some announcements, some reminders. Coming up this Wednesday at 4:00 PM, we'll have a ribbon cutting dedication at 903 Eads. This is for Habitat for Humanity, House Number 84. It's a veteran build and the city's been involved in the original development of this subdivision, Eads at Lincoln subdivision. And now that's been in place for long enough that we were involved in helping Habitat to procure that lot. And I know that been a lot of involvement in doing a beautiful renovation. Diane and I were there and Habitat built for our Rotary Club Saturday, putting the finishing touches on a beautiful home. And it's very exciting. This is a home for a veteran and his family. And hopefully you'd be able to come Wednesday at 4:00 PM to meet the family and dedicate their new home at 903 Eads.
Libby, a question, I saw a refurbished house.
A refurbished house. And it's just beautiful. So it'll give her...
Oh, it's not brand new?
It's not brand new. And this is a new thing that Habitat for Humanity's doing. And I think it's just another way to stabilize our neighborhoods, improve our neighborhoods, remove blight in an environmentally conscientious way. So it's exciting. And you'd be very impressed with this home. Second announcement, coming up on Friday, we sent the council information on a seminar that is going to be presented at the I Hotel. And this is on placemaking, economic development and university/corporate real estate's connectivity to creating social value and innovation. And that is brought to us by Sperry Van Ness, along with the College of Business and the Research Park.
Could you repeat that, please, Libby?
Pardon me?
Could you repeat that, please?
I'll repeat, okay, October 23rd, 8:00 AM to noon. University of Illinois I Hotel Conference Center does require registration. So I think Brandon had sent that out and we have offered to register any council members who would be interested in attending that seminar, symposium.
And it's designed to do what again, please?
The topic is placemaking, creating social value and innovation. And it's about the connections between economic development and university and corporate real estate's connectivity.
Corporate real estate.
Here, I'll give you this announcement.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm repeating some of it to make sure that the listeners are also hearing it again.
Right. It has just some speakers from Alex Frigiri, who many of us know from Sperry Van Ness, David Wilk, who is also... David Wilk, who is also with Sperry Van Ness, and also faculty with Johns Hopkins, DCEO, Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Director, the Dean of the College of Business, the Director of the Research Park and of Economic Development at the U of I, Congressman Rodney Davis, Mayor Finan of Champaign, and Professor Dr. Roger Kennedy, who is in the College of Business. So, quite a lineup. Another upcoming event, the Annual Illinois Bike Summit, that's October 28th, and that registrations are open for that. Looks like October 28th, 29th, and we have, can provide you information on that, presented by the League of Illinois Bicyclists and Champaign County Bikes. And so that program goes again Wednesday and Thursday of next week, and there's a small registration for that as well, that we, we or Public Works can help you with that. Looking ahead to next week, next Tuesday, October 27th, we'll have our final food truck rally at the Civic Center, and we'll try to remind you of that next Monday as well. And that's during the lunchtime, right next to the Civic Center.
Any questions for Libby? Diane?
Hi. This question is on the failure to comply violations that you provided in our packet. And the list, the list we're getting here covers basically January through September of this year, and I'm just curious how, there's a number of tickets issued, not much has been paid this year to date, so where are we with, it's hard to tell where these, what status we're at with each of these things, other than that none of them have been paid. Very few have been paid.
Yeah, let me, let me grab that. I think if there's appeals, and they're probably waiting for an appeal hearing, does it say that there's an appeal pending on it?
Well, it says open. Not many are, there's one that says appeal, but most of them just say open. Does that mean we're trying to collect? We're not, I mean, just where are we in the...
I will find that out and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Erin?
So, Libby, going back to this placemaking piece on October 23rd, I'm, I'm going to see if I can attend that. I'm not sure if I can, but I'm just intrigued by the development, the economic development, especially as it relates to different corporations. When we're planning for the city, and there's some possible collaborations, let's say, with the University of Illinois, are we privy to their, if they have some sort of planning, 15-year plan outlook or something like that? Do we have, can we have, for instance, a community forum with the, with the University of Illinois and the city of Urbana about development plans as it relates to, to Urbana, like things that they're planning to do within the next five years, 10 years? Do we have access to that type of information?
That's a great question. The University of Illinois has a facility, a master plan that is public. It's on their facilities website. I understand they're doing an update. It's basically, it's not a community plan, it's not a comprehensive plan, it's not the type of plan that we're used to doing. It's a campus plan, just a facilities plan. They're not bound by the same types of planning and zoning that we would do in the community. And we do have regular meetings with some of the staff at the university, and so we're informed, you know, some of these activities, but it's, you know, it's not a full engagement of the community. Oftentimes, it might be a response to something that's happening, like the wind turbine was one example a few years back. So, it's, it's a type of collaborative planning I would love to see, and we've begun to talk about the possibility of that, but the goals of the university are very different from the goals of the city, and trying to find where they align in the area of land use planning can be difficult.
So, for instance, the development of the housing or the apartments that are going up on university from, basically from Wright Street East, those are private developers, but it's for university students, basically? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's the market. But the university really wouldn't have been involved in promoting those particular projects in any fashion. I think those are well outside their master planning boundaries.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other reports of officials, of officers? Mike Munson?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a brief update on municipal electric aggregation. On page six of your report you got as part of your packet, you'll see that June was the first month where some of the real savings started kicking in, $96,000, and that should continue all the way through this year. Also, ICC and Ameren just released the default rate that you would pay if you're not in the city's aggregation program, and it's a little bit unusual. The first 800 kilowatt-hours will be two cents higher than our rate, about 6.76 cents or thereabouts, but after 800 hours, it's going to be about the same rate as ours. So it's really not a great incentive to conserve electricity. But the good news is, for most residents that use 800 kilowatt-hours in the winter in our part of the city's program, will save $16 a month on their electric bills, so...
So, our rate is much below what the, what do you call the other rate?
It's the winter rate, and usually they just have a single rate, but this year they have two rates. So the first 800 hours, your kilowatt-hours that you use of electricity, you're going to pay about two cents higher than you pay for the city. And then after that, the rate is very similar to the city's for any usage beyond 800 kilowatt-hours. And I don't have any background about why they want this route.
Is that just residential or any user?
That's residential.
That does seem kind of backwards.
Yeah, but we're still saving, the average resident who will, most of them will use 800 kilowatt-hours in winter months, will save $16 a month on electricity in Urbana.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mike?
And the process of signing up for that is just go on the Ameren site, website or something?
Most people in the city will be in it. You have to opt out of the program. You can't, we have a, if you go on the city's website, there is a municipal electric aggregation button, and then you, you would call our contractor, Home Field Energy. There's, there's a toll-free number, and if you're not a part of the city's program, you can sign up.
Bill?
So for, for new residents, since we have a lot of turnover, do they automatically get enrolled when they sign up?
Yeah, we've got it set up with our contractors so that they get an opt-out letter pretty quickly after they move in, which is a nice thing.
And I do want to say that we bought a house that our youngest daughter is living in, and we got a letter from CD on rental registration, and my husband said it was extremely well-written. So I just thought I'd pass that along to you. Okay, Bill Gray?
Just wanted to...
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
So, well, first I'd like to say, so I hope you're complying with all the rental registration laws.
Well, we're not renting it.
Oh.
So, but if we were, I can assure you that we would follow all the laws.
But on the, on the electric aggregation, yeah, I'm, obviously, you guys know from the last couple of years I've been here, I'm not a fan of a whole lot of government programs, but this is one that I am. So, great job, continued great job. It's one of those rare things where our government can use the buying power of the residents to the residents' benefits, so kudos.
One thing I forgot to add was, we are going to be meeting with our consultants next week about the next round of bidding for beyond this coming, our contract ends in June, so...
So, don't make me a liar. Make it another good rate, all right?
Okay. Bill Gray, Public Works Director.
Just wanted counsel to, heads up for next Monday night, also, at the committee meeting, representatives from the Illinois Department of Transportation will be presenting the University Avenue Road Safety Audit Study Results and Recommended Improvements for Safety. This is on University Avenue between Wright Street and Cunningham Vine intersection, so we'll get to hear about that study.
Diane?
I've been watching those apartments go up along university, and did the study include future pedestrian traffic going back and forth across university at every single point along the way? I just envision hundreds and hundreds of students crossing the street, looking at their phones, and, and not paying attention to the traffic, so I hope the study included future pedestrian traffic in that area.
I think that's the question to ask them.
Okay. I will. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there, is there an actual, I don't remember the plan, but from right there by the, what street that is, basically right across from the parking lot, so would there be a crosswalk or something put right there? Is that part of the plan?
Well, if we're talking at Goodwin Avenue, there is a crosswalk, signals...
No, no, not, not Goodwin, not, no, I'm talking about, so, when I drive past there in the morning to go to work, and it's, it's one lane at this particular point, and then there's a parking lot across the street from the, from the apartment buildings, and so I even see the, the men and women who are working crossing right there at that section, at that, that spot right there. Is there, I'm trying to remember what street that is, right? Math, is it Math?
Harvey?
No, I think it's Harvey.
Okay.
So I'm just, I didn't, I don't remember the plan. Is there going to be some sort of yield to pedestrians or anything right there? I was just wondering, I don't know. No?
I'd say you could bring that question up next Monday night.
Okay.
But I think to answer your question, most of the traffic going back and forth there are workers, construction workers, so it's a temporary situation, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Bill? Thank you. We will move on. I have one appointment to the MOR Development Review Board for a term ending June 30th, 2018, and that would be Matt Cho.
With approval?
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.